All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. I now call the April 4th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by our Erlanger Police Chaplain, Brian Nevins. Thank you for being with us this evening.
If you please join me in prayer. Our Lord and God, we come to you with all prayer and supplication with thanksgiving. In the promise that you give, peace that passes understanding with the mind of Christ. Thank you for your great provision, for a great place to live, for this privilege of gathering and self-government, recognizing the responsibilities and freedoms it carries. We thank you for the hope that comes with each new day and new year. We ask that our city officials would be protective of our rights and take their responsibilities to the residents of our friendship city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve, without personal agendas and pursuits, that they may be women and men of virtue, integrity, and with a heart of humble service. In your word, you promise that if any need wisdom, to simply ask, and you will give it generously. Therefore, we pray for Mayor Fettie, for our city manager, Mr. Wolfick, Chief Radar Ngatsi, and for this assembled council. Hold them to a high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. We thank you for their service and are asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens and a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. We also ask for your blessing upon them and their families. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda said before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Erlanger. And as in the most blessed name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Ms. Nicely, present. Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Reckers?
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. Okay, you've received a copy of the minutes for the March 7th, 2023 Regular City Council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented, Ms. Reckers, Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented, Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, tonight we have some special presentations on the agenda. I'm going to switch things around just a little bit in an effort to be cognizant of some of the firefighters that are in the back that are on shift. So we're going to, let's go ahead and do the oath of office first, okay?
Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to our newest member, Zach Elkins. He started his career with Park Hills in 2016 as a volunteer. He has worked many various fire departments throughout Northern Kentucky, and he was at Elsmere before we landed him here at Erlanger. Want to welcome Zach to the team? You want to down or up?
So you raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. All right, and you'll just state your name after I say aye, okay? I do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter EMT for the city of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the city of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the city of Erlanger. So help me God. Congratulations. All right. Next special presentation is our business spotlight. So we have Griffin Elite here. Thank you so much for joining with us.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here representing, as Jessica said, Griffin Elite Sports and Wellness as the city of Erlanger's April Business of the Month. For those of you who are unfamiliar with Griffin Elite and what we do, I would like to give you a quick overview. We get so many calls saying we drive past every day, but we have no idea what goes on inside. Our 52,000 square foot facility features three NCAA regulation-sized hardwood basketball courts that also convert into five volleyball courts. We also have a 60-by-35-yard turf field and a 5,000-square-foot weight room. Since our opening in 2015, our goal has always been to be able to offer the community a high-end experience that a facility like ours can offer, but at an affordable price for the community. Some of the core services that we offer include the following: our general memberships for anyone over the age of 13. These include access to our weight room, our courts, and our turf; our sports-specific basketball and soccer skills training; the many benefits of cryotherapy; our newly-added TrackMan golf simulator and private party room that's available for rental; and our various camps and clinics that we offer throughout the course of the year. Most popular are youth summer camps that we have coming up, including our famous Survivor Camp, and then our general soccer and basketball skills camps. Some other services that we have a privilege of providing to the community at our facility includes those of which are offered by our valued partners, St. Elizabeth Healthcare and Orthocinci, specifically their sports medicine and physical therapy sectors. St. Elizabeth's sports med doctors see patients at our location, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. PT sees patients Monday through Friday, and then Orthocinci sees patients at Griffin Elite Tuesdays and Fridays. Wrapping up the overview of our services with another large part of our business, our athletic performance and training services. St. Elizabeth has actually recently helped us revamp this portion of our business by offering sports performance at Griffin Elite. Some of these services include the following: youth general sports performance training, a variety of adult fitness classes, including some virtual options that we have coming summer of 2023; return to activity for post-therapy folks who have exhausted their insurance with therapy; and then team training services. Our partnership with St. Elizabeth has allowed us to be kind of the one-stop-shop for top-tier training and wellness in the area for everyone, from your beginner athletes to your pros to your just everyday adult citizens. All in all, we look forward to continuing to be involved in the community, whether it be donating our services to the local school fundraisers, offering special discounted rates for our local first responders and military, or by being here with you, fine people. We have enjoyed our place in the community over these past eight years, and we look forward to many more. So therefore, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. If not, I do have some info booklets that I would love for anyone who's interested to grab on their way out. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for having me.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. I'm going to do one other piece of housekeeping, one other special presentation, and then we're going to get on to St. Elizabeth Healthcare, because then we want to go right into public comment, okay? That's why I'm rearranging everything. Don't want to hold you up any longer. All right, so we have our Arbor Day celebration, and I'm sure Councilwoman Nicely will tell us a little bit about Arbor Day and when to be there, where it's going to be held in just a little bit. But we have the proclamation for the day. "To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed a special day for planting trees, and Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees. Trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil, lower our heating and cooling costs, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and other wood products. Trees increase property value, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our homes. The city of Erlanger encourages all residents and business owners to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands by planting and caring for trees in celebration of Arbor Day's 151st anniversary. Through the dedication of Public Works, the city's Beautification Task Force, and Urban Forest Commission, the city of Erlanger has been awarded the designation of Tree City USA. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Fettie, Mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kitten County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2023, to be Arbor Day in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Erlanger on this day, April 4th, 2023." Thank you. And thank you. All right. Our final presentation is Mr. Garen Colvin with St. Elizabeth. Thank you so much for being here.
Mayor Fettie, city council members, thank you for the invitation to allow us to speak this evening. My name is Garen Colvin. I'm here in my role as President and CEO of St. Elizabeth Healthcare and as a member of the Northern Kentucky community to express my support for maintaining the CON process in the state of Kentucky. As you consider this proposal calling for the elimination of CON, we want to ensure that you have the facts on CON, how it affects St. Elizabeth Healthcare, the care we deliver, and the many different populations we serve. COM programs, certificate of need, just, we use acronyms in healthcare, sorry. COM programs primarily aim to control healthcare costs by limiting duplicative services and determining whether new costly capital expenditures meet a community need. In Kentucky, community need is governed by the state health plan, which specifies which health services require a certificate of need and includes quality standards that providers must meet before entering a community. CON applications are evaluated by an administrative officer in the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. An administrative judge makes a decision based on the merits of the application, or in some cases, on information shared during an administrative hearing. Any effective party has the ability to request a hearing through the Cabinet of Health and Family Services. The cabinet modifies the state health plan each and every year, and that state health plan is open for community public comments each year. Currently, 35 states across the country have certificate of need. The number of health services governed by certificate of needs vary by state. In Kentucky, with the most recent update of the state health plan, only 21 services are required under a certificate of need. Over time, the number of services governed by CON has continually decreased with the updating of the plan each and every year. I have reached out to both leadership in the House and the Senate. We have agreed, St. Elizabeth Healthcare and the Kentucky Hospital Association, that we will work with our legislators in the interim over the summer to modernize and continue this update of not only the processes, but the services that would be included in the certificate of need process. Just so you know, in the last 10 years, there have been 14 CON applications for healthcare services in Kenton County alone. Thirteen of those 14 were approved. In addition to the 14 full applications, they're called non-subreviews, there were 14 additional non-subreviews, all 14 were approved. So in the last 10 years, 27 of 28 CON requests have been approved in Kenton County alone by the Cabinet of Health and Family Services. CON, free-market principles are great, I'm a big believer in them, but only when the markets are truly free. The reality is that healthcare operates in a highly regulated market. When 70% of your business is controlled by the government, who sets the prices, they set the rules, and require you to serve everyone, you do not have the ability to decide, regardless of whether they can pay, this is not a free market. Framing CON as a free-market issue misrepresents our industry in an environment which we operate in. I just want to give you an example of where this is true. In the last three years, healthcare costs have risen about 8% per year. And I think if you've gone to the grocery store, maybe not this month, but about three months ago, eggs were $7 a dozen, because every part of that supply chain, that cost gets passed on to the consumer. Healthcare, because 70% of our business is government, we do not have the ability to pass that on. Our insurance contracts are three years out. We do not have the ability to recoup the losses that we receive from the cost of living. So throughout the pandemic, 8% a year, Medicare cut our reimbursement over those same three years, so our losses from Medicare and Medicaid continue to decrease, and we don't have the ability to pass that on to the consumer. Therefore, we're not truly a free market. St. Elizabeth is unique in our area in that we are a safety net hospital. This means we will care for any patient regardless of their ability to pay. Communities like ours greatly depend on access to safety net facilities like St. Elizabeth. Certificate of Need assures that we are able to provide these comprehensive, critical, top-quality services to the entire community. In fact, it's only because of certificate of need processes that St. Elizabeth can be a safety net hospital. Without certificate of need, outside operators could come into our communities and cherry-pick the most profitable services to offer, and they could restrict access to those services, providing them only access to private insurance. I don't know if you know this, but most of the service lines we offer lose money. And you'd be surprised, inpatient, medical, surgical, we lose money. ICU, we lose money. Only certain services are we able to make a profit. And if, without CON, individuals could come in from outside, and I'm not just talking across the river, they could come in from across the United States, and private equity groups, insurance companies, and they can really impact our profitability, not just ours, profitability throughout Kentucky, and rural healthcare would be at jeopardy. I will talk a little bit about Owen County before I finish here. But as a nonprofit, mission-based organization, St. Elizabeth fills an important need in Northern Kentucky. Our percentage of patients with Medicaid or no insurance is equivalent to that in the community. So what that means is our community fluctuates between 22% and 23% Medicaid. The Medicaid we take is between 22% and 23%. I assure you, the Cincinnati hospitals that are throughout Northern Kentucky today, they are prevalent throughout Northern Kentucky today, they're not taking 22% to 23% Medicaid, and that's a concern for us. St. Elizabeth has a long history of proudly serving this community and delivering safe, high-quality, accessible care to all who need it, regardless of their ability to pay. Certificate of Need has allowed us to do this. St. Elizabeth cares deeply about this community. In addition to delivering life-saving medical care and services, our organization has invested millions of dollars to programs and services benefiting the Northern Kentucky community and the people who work and live here. On behalf of St. Elizabeth Healthcare, our 900 associates who work in Erlanger, and an additional 400 who call Erlanger home, we respectfully ask that you vote no on this resolution here today. Thank you for your time, and I'll answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Colvin. I heard you mention that term "safety net hospital," and you'd also written that in a letter to me. I've looked through the Kentucky revised statute on the CON. I don't see that defined anywhere. Could you help me with the definition of what is a safety net hospital?
So for St. Elizabeth Healthcare, a safety net hospital is that last source for providing healthcare for those who don't have the ability to pay. So there are programs, Medicare, Medicaid, insurance, but there are several indigent who don't have the ability to pay. Because of our mission, who we are, and our commitment to this community, we're going to be that safety net for everybody, whether they have the ability to pay or not. And people coming in from out of state, they will not have that same commitment to our community. They're not going to be invested in all the nonprofits that we're invested in, and that's really the true definition of safety net hospital. And in most counties, their county hospital is a safety net hospital because it's the only county.
Okay. So are the hospitals in Cincinnati considered safety net hospitals as well?
No. None of, I would consider the University of Cincinnati to be a safety net hospital. There is a tax in the Hamilton County levy, and I'm not here asking for levies, so don't get concerned. But there's a levy that the University of Cincinnati will get reimbursement from the county, so they are really the safety net. So most of the indigent and a lot of Medicaid find their way to the University of Cincinnati for that reason. So I would consider UC a safety net hospital.
Okay. So just to clarify, your biggest issue is a hospital that could come in and cherry-pick some of the more profitable portions of the work. If it was another safety net hospital that came into the area, would you be okay with that?
I mean, I think, I don't know how you would regulate that, because we're not regulated to be the safety net. We don't qualify to be a safety net. We're just a safety net because of who we are, and I don't think you could regulate how, to force someone else to be a safety net hospital. But I would tell you that from, our biggest concern is someone coming in and looking at only a limited few services that they would want to provide. So if you open CON, there is, no one's going to build a hospital in Northern Kentucky, because you can't make money on inpatient care, for the most part. Only a few service lines make money. Owen County, when that hospital went bankrupt, they lost their inpatient hospital. As a result, there's not been a hospital in Owen County since then. Anybody could apply for, under our current certificate of need. So changing certificate of need is not going to help the Owen County situation in that community, because no one's going to want to go there, and that's why the hospital went bankrupt. There's just not enough volume there to support it. Thought I saw another hand. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, you were talking about the cons apps that were approved. Could you give us a few examples of what those were?
I can. Do you mind if I just look on my phone?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So I know, I do know, one of them was Christ Hospital had a rehab program that was approved. Christ Hospital had an ambulatory care facility, that's their Fort Wright facility, that was approved. I gotta look. I thought you were going to ask me the 21 services, so I had that one keyed up on my phone. I was ready for that one. So so one of the things that, let's see, yeah, THC, let's see. So personal care beds were approved. There were seven rehab agencies, one of which was the Christ Hospital received. There was some transferring of MRIs that was approved, and then there were two ambulatory care clinics, and one of those was the Christ Hospital.
Okay. Well, the reason I asked was because I received an email from a lady from Children's Hospital, who was an audiologist, and she had said that at one time, because of the con, that the children of Northern Kentucky were denied hearing aids, that they couldn't supply those. And then, I guess finally she got through somehow, and so now today, she has permitted to do that as a person from Children's Hospital.
So that would not have been a CON issue, because that's not a covered service under CON. So that's not one of the 24 services, and we partner with children's, or we used to partner with them a lot, and that wouldn't be a service.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused, because when I was young, growing up, we had several hospitals in the area. We had Spears in Campbell County, we had Booth Hospital down in Covington, St. Ease, where I was born, down in Covington. And then St. Luke's, I'm not sure exactly when they came on the scene at Fort Thomas, but then Fort Thomas eventually took over Booth Hospital, and they opened up out in Florence, and then eventually St. Ease took over St. Luke's. But I guess my question would be, is how did it work back then, where we didn't have any problems, and we didn't have CONs back then?
So we've always had CONs.
Even in the 40s and 50s?
Yeah, 60s, since the 60s.
Okay.
But, you know, we would have to prove need, just like the program similar to today, and if there was a need, you would have no problem. But if, for whatever reason, like at one point in time, St. Luke wanted to do an open-heart program, and so they had to show need. Unfortunately, it was right around the time of the merger, so they didn't follow through with their application, but they were granted an open-heart program at St. Luke. Dr. Heidi Merle is the CEO of our physician organization. She was actually a board member on St. Luke's board at that point in time, and she's going to speak just a couple sentences about that transition and how it happened and why it happened. But I think it's going to really help your question. I don't want to steal her thunder. She'll pay for, I'll pay for it tomorrow.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I have a few questions. I'll tag on what Vicky said as well. I think the audiologist was saying that, and this is how I interpreted it, was that SANEE wouldn't allow childrens to put an outpatient clinic here. Not necessarily that they weren't allowing them to give kids hearing aids, but that there wasn't the ability to put an outpatient clinic in Northern Kentucky from children's, and that that was what was prevented by certificate of need, or specifically by SANEE, I guess, opposing it. So was that?
That's, I mean, we would have not had the authority or the control. The only thing I can think of is that one point in time, we had a partnership with them, and that partnership would allow us to decide who was going to do what within that partnership. But that was, man, that was quite a while ago. Yeah.
Oh, I know they do. My son's been there several times. I'm very well aware of it. But I also am well aware that we have to drive across the river for a lot of services from children's also, that aren't available over here, that probably are covered by CON.
I would, yeah, I mean, they're expanding in Campbell County and Boone County quite a bit, so they are bringing a lot more services to the market. There, like I said, there are a few inpatient services that they're not allowed to provide here, that's it, for the most part.
What was, you mentioned that there was one thing in Kenton County that was denied. What was that?
That would have been the AFC that was
So it was a surgery center?
The surgery center. But everyone seems to think that was a hospital. But everyone seems to think that was a hospital. It was not. They were asking for an ambulatory care center and an ambulatory surgery center.
So, who...
They already had the AFC in Fort Wright, so...
So, there's a surgery center in Fort Wright?
They had ambulatory care, sorry.
Right. But there's not, but the ambulatory surgery center was denied?
It was, under appeal, it was denied, correct?
And that was from Christ?
That was from Christ.
Okay. Okay, a couple more questions. So, you've insinuated that Christ does, or wouldn't accept self-pay Medicare or Medicaid. Do we actually know that?
The only thing I would tell you is, when you look at their 990 information and you look at the percent of Medicaid that they take in their overall program, and you look at the Medicaid percentage we take, we're equivalent to the Medicaid in our community. They are not. So, the other thing, when they applied for an AFC, they showed what the Medicaid percentage would be, and it was significantly less than the Medicaid percentage that we take. I'm not saying they won't provide Medicaid because they have a lot of, we all have people who progress through the paraclass. Paraclass is the, who is providing your coverage, your insurance. So, they have people who started in managed care, who may have not done well in work. Then they fall into Medicaid. They're going to keep those patients. But for us, we're going to take anybody. Our physician organization, they are incented to take care of people not worried about any financial class. And I can't say that for Christ Hospital.
Okay. And the only other thing I'll say is that Mr. Hermes asked if, what kind of, you know, he asked you to define safety net. You said you were a safety net hospital, but then you said you weren't really a safety net hospital.
No, I didn't say I wasn't a safety net. I said, there's not a, I don't, there's not a category in the state health plan that identifies you're a safety net hospital. By definition, we're a safety net hospital because we take care of everybody coming through the doors, whether they have the ability to pay or not.
And we know that other hospitals wouldn't do that?
Again, I think U.C. does that. And what I would say is, if the other hospital's Medicaid percentage was equivalent to that in the community, then I would consider them a safety net hospital.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Colvin?
Yes.
You said you had it pulled up on your phone, so you obviously think it's important. What are the 21 services?
Now, I moved it.
Sorry.
Gosh, I was ready. So, the first set of category is probably going to be mostly inpatient-related. So, you have to apply for certificate of need to be an acute care hospital, and then you have to apply for acute care beds. So, you become a hospital, and then the size of your organization is based on the number of beds that you operate. Comprehensive physical rehabilitation beds, which we don't provide today. Special care, neonatal, so NICU, NICU is the common word, which we do provide. Open-heart surgery, we provide. Organ transplant program, we do not provide. Then, the next category is psychiatric beds, and then psychiatric residential treatment facility. We partner with Sun Behavioral Health in Erlanger to provide the psychiatric. They're here today, great partners. So, you have nursing home beds, which you'll hear from a couple of nursing homes in your community today. Home Health Agency. The thing I'd like to add about a lot of these categories, there are multiple existing providers providing these services today. So, even some of these that St. Elizabeth may provide, there are like four, five, six, some of these seven additional people providing those services today. So, it's not like we're the only provider of healthcare services in Northern Kentucky. Nursing home, nursing facilities, a lot of mom-and-pop shops, and then a couple bigger programs. Hospice services, which there are community providers. We actually allow a community provider to provide hospice service, inpatient hospice services in our hospital. They come in and take care of the patient in our hospital, and they're not tied to us. Residential hospice facility. Intermediate care facility for individuals with intellectual disability. And cardiac cath programs. Megavolt, which is radiation. PET scan. Any new technology, which is just a category. MRIs. The thing I'd like to mention about some of these services is there's physicians in the community who have the ability to provide those services through a physician office exemption. So, they are exempted from the CON process. So, Cincinnati Ortho, for example, they have MRI in all their offices, and that's not part of the CON process. And then ambulance services. And AFC, ambulatory care, and then chemical dependency treatments. Thing about ambulance services, we work very hand-in-hand. Now, we did it through our Kentucky Hospital Association with all the ambulance companies across the state because they fought for, and your group was great, fought for CON for ambulance services because they were fearful in other parts of the state that the hospitals would want to take over ambulance services in some areas. My commitment to fire, we were in that business many, many years ago, and we learned our lesson that it's best to be served by the community providers. And it was just so difficult because we may have had an agreement with Erlanger, but then Florence did their own. And so, you skip Florence and go to Wall, and it just wasn't effective. So, this is the best way, and we're supportive of that initiative. And we worked very closely, the hospital association, with the people who framed that topic in Frankfurt. Yes, sir?
Yeah, thank you. So, I tried to do a little bit of research on this in the process. And since you're the person that I think knows the most about this in the room, I'm going to ask you a few more questions if you don't mind. So, who actually issues the certificate of need?
So, it's the, so you apply through the Cabinet of Family Health, or Cabinet of Health and Family Services, CHFS. And so, they are the body who authorizes the certificate of need. They have a hearing officer. So, it's not like North Carolina where people come in and it's a vote, and it's a political, this is a hearing officer, a judge, that both sides present. And a lot of times, if no one contests the CON, the cabinet will make a decision based on the application that was submitted. But more times than not, you're going to have an effective party that's going to present. If you do the formal review, the applicant has to prove that there's a need for the application. If you do a non-sub-review, while most of those get approved, the person objecting or contesting has to prove their side. So, it's so much easier to do it under non-sub-review, and that's why they were 14 for 14. But cabinet for family, long-winded, CHFS.
Is the judge or the hearing officer, is that an employee of the cabinet?
I don't believe so. Is it, yeah, they're lawyers for the cabinet.
Okay.
And then, the way the process works is if you have, and if the hearing officer renders a decision and either party wants to appeal it, then you have, the next step is to go to Franklin Circuit Court, and you appeal the decision in Franklin Circuit Court. And so, at that point in time, you know, it's out of the hands of any one or two people voting. It's now one judge.
Okay. And so, the people who are hearing the case and when the judge or the hearing officer is listening, you say the cabinet then makes the determination?
The judge makes the decision. On a hearing like that, the judge is the decider.
Okay.
The only time that, if there's, an application will go through the cabinet if there's not someone contesting. I don't think you have to have a hearing to prove your case. They're just going to take your application based on how it was submitted and did it meet the criteria. And all you have to do is meet the criteria that there is a need.
Okay.
And again, the CON process, it increases access, it increases quality, and it decreases cost. So, the state of Kentucky in 2019, when we last had a discussion like this, was the fifth lowest-cost state in the United States. Way lower than most CON, non-Con states. And the beauty of that process is, we aren't the healthiest state. So, the fact that we are the lowest-cost state with all the bad health that we have, the smoke and the diabetes, the heart cancer, and we still can manage a low cost, to me is evidence that this is a great process.
Okay. So, it sounded like a lot of the different categories you were discussing, that it's the number of beds. Is that typically what they make the determination if there's a need or not, based on how many beds are available now and how many would be, are applied for?
Yeah, so the inpatient hospital, I mean, it's not a common request across the state. So, what they'll try to do is they'll look at your census, they'll look at your license, and they'll determine if there's need based on how full of a hospital you are. So, if you're, and each, the cabinet sets the criteria with the state health plan. So, each one of those categories has a different metric that's going to drive that decision process. But it's all laid out. And so, you know when you're applying what you have to meet in order to achieve success with your application.
Is some of that based on population or demographic or...
Yeah, absolutely. But, and again, everyone's going to be a little bit different. So, if you, yeah, so if you look at why are there more hospitals in Cincinnati than Northern Kentucky? Well, the population in Cincinnati is much greater than the population in Northern Kentucky. Same with comparing Lexington and Louisville with Northern Kentucky.
Okay, that kind of leads me into the next question. Are the decisions impacted, the decisions in Northern Kentucky, are they impacted because of the hospitals on the other side of the river? Or do they only look at the state where the CON is applicable?
So, I can tell you just for 30 years of CON experience, different judge will look at that differently. So, they're not supposed to look at the capacity that's in one area or another, but I will tell you they do. And so, they have to understand why they're making that decision and prove it, but they'll do it.
Okay.
But Ohio doesn't come in, in general, Ohio doesn't come into play when you're in Frankfurt. But there will be certain instances where it can.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a follow-up to something you just said. You said that CON has increased quality. We're currently in the bottom 10 in the healthiest states in the country. So, how has CON impacted the quality of health outcomes in Kentucky?
Because, so, and I can't believe I'm going to get fired for going this long without mentioning that St. Elizabeth is the number-one quality hospital in the state of Kentucky. And the reason that I explained a little bit before, the bad outcomes, the poor health in Kentucky's not related to the healthcare that's provided in Kentucky. It's more related to the poor health of Kentucky. So, when you have a smoking rate that's significantly greater than any other state, and that's causing heart attacks, that's causing cancer, that's the impact of, what I'm going to say, is social determinants slash behavior, not reflective of the quality. We check our quality indicators constantly, and we're outstanding.
But that doesn't really answer my question about how does, you said that CON improves the quality.
Yeah, you have...
I mean, I know you're saying SANE's number-one in quality, but that doesn't really explain how CON impacts quality.
So, there are metrics that you have to meet in order to pass the application. So, for example, open heart. So, if you want to do open-heart program, it's been a while since we presented our application, but you have to have so many hearts, and you have to prove that you can have so many hearts in order to get enough repetitiveness to be successful and have a quality program. So, that's how the CON helps improve the quality across the state. So, if you're in an area that's only going to do 100 open hearts, that's not enough to have a quality program. You're not going to get approved. But if you can do 200 per doc instead of, you know, 50 per doc, then you're going to have a higher quality, therefore you'll get approved. And that's across every specialty. There's different metrics.
All right.
Yeah, Tyson, I am old. That's how I know everything about CON. I've just been around longer than anybody else. Yes, ma'am?
What percentage of SANE's patients come from Indiana and Ohio for care?
Ooh, all right. Yeah. I would say, maybe more from Ohio. Probably 2% or 3% from Ohio. Indiana is a little different. Indiana, they still migrate to the west side just because of the physicians that were in that community so many years ago. But they are starting to come here, and especially after we were able to take Indiana Medicaid. So, the way Indiana worked, they could, we weren't allowed to take Indiana Medicaid, so those individuals were going to Hamilton County.
Do you know the percentage of Kentucky residents that go to Ohio for care?
About 20%.
Why do you think that is?
I think there's a lot of people that grew up in Ohio and migrated to Kentucky. So, they've had a physician relationship in Ohio. Some people, you know, they just, they want a different choice, and that choice is here today. Christ Hospital is throughout Northern Kentucky. UC's right down the street. Mercy, they're hot and cold. They're here sometimes, they're gone. Children's is all over the place. So, you know, I think, you know, that's probably a reason. Relationships that were established a long time ago.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That was very, very educational. I appreciate that. Clark, if you would be so kind. Okay, so, next on the agenda is public comment. And I'm just going to, we always have these rules, but I think today is more important than ever. So, we allow three minutes per each individual, just to be courteous. I will, at two and a half minutes, I'll raise my hand and just kind of give you a little warning. And then I will just do a little tap, okay? Because we got quite a bit of people here, and I don't think you guys want to sleep here, okay? So, but we want to make sure that everybody is heard and everybody has the opportunity. So, we will, I'm going to also look through here and kind of group. Everybody's here for the same thing, so we're good. There are no other, no other issues to be brought up on the agenda for this evening. So, we'll go ahead and get started. Carol Dwyer. And when you come to the podium, if you can just state your name and your address, and then we'll go ahead and use the timer. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Dwyer, as stated, and I live in Florence, Kentucky. Do you need my full address?
Your city, your city's fine.
City's fine. Okay, so I'm here to ask you to vote yes on the resolution to get rid of the certificate of need. And the reason is, unlike, you know, what they were just saying, I did grow up in Northern Kentucky, always got my care in Northern Kentucky, was a big St. Luke person, then worked for St. Elizabeth, and kind of went back and forth as one does when there's competition. It's a good thing. And then, until, like, I just started to see, because I worked there, the quality of care go downhill. And my husband, when he was 40 years old, he had a heart attack, and it was supposed to be routine, and they said he would be there for three days. Wound up being there eight days, and I told him, "If you don't let us go home, you're going to kill him, and then I'm going to have to sue all of you." So, they did let him go home. He got better. We got different care at Christ Hospital. We went to their heart facility. And we have been done with SANE. Well, my mom, because my parents live in Edgewood, and they can literally see St. Elizabeth from the top of their neighborhood. They just didn't want to switch. They liked their doctors, whatever. Up until, my mom got sick recently, have been very healthy. They're in their 80s, have been very healthy. But my mom got sick, and I had to push her St. Elizabeth doctor. I'm like, "Something's wrong with her. You're not doing tests." I had to go on visits with her because she just wasn't getting the care that she needed. So, he did start to do some tests at my push, and... So he did start to do some tests at my push, and then he diagnosed her with cancer and sent her for a paracentesis, which is where they drain fluid off because her liver wasn't working and she had all this fluid. So they sent her to St. Elizabeth. Again, I wasn't pushing my parents, let them make their own decisions. We went to St. Elizabeth for this paracentesis. And that the person who performed it, to her credit, she did do some labs beforehand, and she found out that my mother's white count, which indicates infection, had doubled since the last time they had taken it. My mom also had this lower leg wound that her doctor had ignored and told us that it was a cellulitis, but we, me and my sister were both nurses, we insisted, yes, it was. Anyway, so we got the antibiotic. And so she's at this, after the procedure, they bring us back, tell us this bad news about the white count, and they put a call into her doctor, "But you guys can just go ahead and take her home." I look at my mom, and she looks like death. And she's barely responsive, and I'm like, "Did you look at her wound? Because in just the two hours that she's been back here, it's gotten like so much worse." "Yeah, I looked at it, you know, she'll be fine, you can take her home." You know, we took, so we didn't take her home. We took her to Christ Hospital, where they admitted her for septic shock, and she almost died, and no one there could believe that they were going to send her home, but they were. And she would have been dead if not for our proactiveness, and we need choices. I had to drive her 30 minutes in rush hour traffic to get there. That's why I need another hospital that I can trust in Northern Kentucky. That's why.[695.54][695.54](APPLAUSE).
One second before the gavel.[699.54][699.54](LAUGHTER). You must have practiced.
Wrap it up quick.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, next is Heidi Merly.
Hello, I'm Heidi Merly, and I work in Erlanger. Thank you for providing an opportunity for me to speak with you today about the proposed CON resolution. My name is Dr. Heidi Merly, and I'm the president and CEO of St. Elizabeth Physicians. I'm a general surgeon by training, I've served the community in Northern Kentucky for the past 26 years. And I'd like to offer unique perspective of the health care landscape when there was a Cincinnati-based hospital operating here in Northern Kentucky. As a member of the medical staff of the former St. Luke Hospitals, and ultimately a member of its board of trustees, I experienced firsthand the Cincinnati Hospital's strategy of health care in Northern Kentucky. When Cincinnati Hospitals served Northern Kentucky through the Health Alliance of Greater Cincinnati, they took the profits from the St. Luke Hospitals to expand programs in Cincinnati to the detriment of our patients in Northern Kentucky. Northern Kentucky provided simply a feeder system to the Cincinnati Hospitals, where the most complex procedures were only performed across the river. Little to no investment was made in our Northern Kentucky hospitals. I remember a patient under my care at one of the former St. Luke Hospitals. The patient had an aortic dissection, which is a critically ill issue. The patient needed emergency care from a cardiothoracic surgeon, which was not available at St. Luke. I called the Health Alliance helpline, and I remember being on hold, listening to the standard recorded message, "The Health Alliance of Greater Cincinnati, better support for your doctor and better care for you." That was their tagline. I didn't feel supported in that minute, and I certainly was not providing better care for my patient. After being told by a Cincinnati cardiothoracic surgeon they didn't have capacity, they advised me to call someone else, so I called St. Elizabeth, and they took the patient immediately, even though it was a Health Alliance patient. The patient was then cared for by one of St. Elizabeth's skilled cardiac surgeons. As a St. Luke board member, I remember repeatedly asking questions of the Health Alliance leadership about capital. Can we update our Kentucky facilities to improve our quality of care? There were plans at the time for the Health Alliance to invest in Cincinnati hospitals, especially a new one in the Westchester area. We all know that that's there now. But what they thought is that maybe they would either sell off or close the Northern Kentucky hospitals, the St. Luke hospitals, to fund some of those projects in Ohio. Neither of those scenarios came to pass, they did not close our hospitals. However, the Health Alliance's obvious lack of interest in supporting care in Northern Kentucky led me personally to support the St. Luke Board, vote to withdraw from the Health Alliance, and also to support our merger with St. Elizabeth. So removing the CON requirement in Kentucky will return Northern Kentucky to the day where profit-seeking providers seek to disintermediate the care of Northern Kentucky patients to bring profits home to their hospitals. I urge you not to support this CON resolution. Thank you for your time today and for your service as council members. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You were perfect as well.[899.04][899.04](APPLAUSE). Okay, Dan Gronick. And next on the list is Dan Thomas, if you want to be prepared.
Well, thank you for the opportunity for me to speak this evening about the proposed CON resolution that council is considering. My name is Dan Gronick, and I'm the retired president of US Bank here in Northern Kentucky and a proud Erlanger resident. I would like to express my concern about city council voting on a resolution that could potentially harm one of the biggest tax bases, the health care industry. A large population of Erlanger, about roughly 900 employees from St. Elizabeth, are lucky and proud to call Erlanger its home, as well as a large host of other health care providers who could be affected by the elimination of a CON. I can, you can, we all can, speak about the incredible impact St. Elizabeth has on our community in delivering the highest quality of health care, as well as the economic stimulus spurred by St. Elizabeth across the region, including Erlanger. I've been an active member of the foundation at St. Elizabeth, raising money for various projects and programs. Heart and Vascular, the Institute, but most recently, the Cancer Campaign. I've been blessed to speak to many grateful patients who lives have been saved and changed by the compassionate health care they received. One example, let me give you a couple of examples if I could. One example, though, is a family who was so touched by how the Cancer Care Navigator helped her father through his cancer treatment, that they donated, invested $500,000 on Christmas Eve, on Christmas Eve, to the navigation program so that other patients could continue to experience the same level of care. Other examples are the Healing Gardens, the Hospice Center, and the Grieving Center. My personal experience example is a mother of 21 children. She's my mother. Six months after her death, her father died, my grandfather. She left her $21,000 from his estate. My brothers and sisters didn't hesitate, we took the $21,000 and immediately donated to the hospital. My father and mother loved the hospital. Although I don't fully understand the complexity of health care, what I do know about St. Elizabeth has been an incredible steward, they've been incredible stewards with the resources they have been given, and look for ways they can support our community that they all, and we all, love so much. This resolution could hurt St. Elizabeth and force it to reduce operations in Erlanger and more broadly in Northern Kentucky, and therefore I am opposed to council taking any action on this. Thank you.
Thank you.[1124.18][1124.18](APPLAUSE).
I'm Dan Thomas, the chief operating officer of Sun Behavioral in Erlanger. We operate the hospital there. Just, I'll be very brief, but wanted to just bring up a couple of points from our perspective in coming in. We've been a partner with Sanes and are very dedicated to serving those who need it the most within our community. While Sanes serves a population equal to the local community, our population is predominantly Medicaid by nature. Over 70% of our volume is either Medicaid or uncompensated care within the facility. So it's a huge portion of what we see within the community. And as a result of that, the CON is a protection device also for us to make sure that somebody's committed to doing that. By nature, a lot of our patients are marginalized, and a lot of our patients are homeless, a lot of our patients end up needing to access those services, and it's vital to ensure that we keep access to those services in the community. Our issue is not one of bed capacity. We actually have excess bed capacity within the community at this point, and even within our facility. So we feel that the CON is vital in being able to look at that bed need. What our bigger challenge is, is access to staff within the community. And the ability or addition of other entities in the community coming in and setting up hospital beds competes in access to our staff that we have within the community, which we already have a challenge of recruiting and getting people to move into the area to be able to fully staff the beds that are available within the marketplace. And I won't repeat a lot of what Garen said, but agree with him wholeheartedly with that. And I just thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.[1260.68][1260.68](APPLAUSE). Dan, can I ask you a question? Are you local?
I am, I'm actually the chief operating officer of Sun. I'm actually filling in as the interim CEO of the hospital--
Okay.
--because we're changing out our CMO at this point, it starts in two weeks.
So you're from out of town?
I am.
Can we meet tomorrow?
Sure.
Awesome. Is this phone number okay, the one that you listed here?
Yes.
That's your phone? Okay. I would just love to be able to have a meeting with you before you go back. Okay, awesome, thank you. Okay, all right. Next is Bonnie Hendrick, and then after is Carol Beal.
Good evening, and my name, as she mentioned, is Bonnie Hendrick. I am a, I work at St. Elizabeth Healthcare Dahlwick location. I serve there as the program manager and a community liaison around mental health and substance use disorders. The last time I was in this room was about 10 years ago, when we, many of us were working on the, when heroin, the heroin epidemic emerged in Northern Kentucky, and we were all wringing our hands, not knowing what to do. I can tell you that since that period of time, St. Elizabeth healthcare has been very active. I had, I and a colleague of mine came to work at St. Elizabeth about 10 years, eight to 10 years ago, it's getting foggy now, to help coordinate some of the efforts internally and work as a community liaison with our partners. And with our partners, we have been able to distribute that life-saving drug called Narcan. We've worked with countless community partners to knit together a comprehensive, community-wide, regional recovery-oriented system of care. We have assisted in the establishment of syringe access programs. And the heroin epidemic just now is seeing a second wave, well, not just now, but we've been experiencing it for about two years now with the proliferation of fentanyl and the other drugs that go along with it. So we continue to be busy, the direct line staff, as well as our top leadership, and one example of that is Garen Colvin, our CEO, sits on the Northern Kentucky Office of Drug Control Policy Advisory Board, along with other key community leaders, to help advise that regional recovery-oriented system of care. We have also, through our partnership with St. Elizabeth Physicians, created pathways to substance use treatment for any patient, any inpatient, any patient who comes into our emergency department and primary care, to get them into evidence-based treatment at St. Elizabeth Physicians Journey Recovery Center. It was established as a specialty center for the purpose of substance use treatment. And those patients are, we have a process in place where those patients get identified and get referred to not just journey, but to an appropriate level of care. And I can tell you that at Journey Recovery Center, those patients, at the, one year post-treatment initiation are 20, there are, well, I'm, my number has gotten confused. 85% of those patients are drug-free after one year of treatment. I apologize. And so, and that's it for me.[1504.04][1504.04](LAUGHTER). Well, let me tell you, I can tell you that I have been involved in the Northern Kentucky community for, working with substance use for many years, and I would urge you, because of what I have seen at St. Elizabeth since that time, I urge you to reconsider the notion of elimination. Without those services, without the CON, those services go away.
Thank you.[1529.62][1529.62](APPLAUSE). So Carol Beal, and then next is Sarah Gialando. All right, Carol, Carol--
Carol.
Carol, and then you're up next.[1543.54][1543.54](LAUGHTER). Sorry, didn't mean to confuse.
Hi, my name's Carol Beal, and I work for St. Elizabeth in Erlanger at the Dahlwick office, and I also reside in Erlanger. And I guess I'm, I just have a couple of questions. I'm curious, how did this issue even come to be on the Erlanger City Council agenda? And how will eliminating the CON benefit St. Elizabeth specifically? Like, why, I'm just confused why this is even an issue right now.
I can answer that. So one of the new state representatives, Mary Ann Proctor, had reached out to us to have some time in front of our council to present a piece of legislation that she was in charge of creating. And we make sure that we give our legislators the opportunity to have time in front of our council members. I mean, just like we do with our representative Steve Doan, you know, we want to be able to have that open communication with our legislators, just so, you know, we want to hear from them, and we want them to be able to hear from us. So being able to have the legislator here and present her case, and then, you know, council takes it into their hands from there. So then giving Garen Colvin the opportunity to have the other side of it only seemed fair, to give each opportunity equal time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.[1643.87][1643.87](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for allowing me to speak at the council meeting today. My name is Sarah Gialando, and I work for St. Elizabeth Healthcare at the Dahlwick Drive location in Erlanger. There's lots of us there. I'd like to offer a few additional perspectives on the idea of choice that I think we've talked about, a bit about tonight. I would say that there is a lot of choice in Northern Kentucky. If you look at the stats, only 6% of people in an average year needs, need hospital care. So hospital care is like the most severe, most acute care. Most people receive most of their health care from physician offices, imaging centers, diagnostics, you know, some procedures that are in physician offices. And when we look at Northern Kentucky, as I think Mr. Colvin mentioned, nearly every health system from Cincinnati has offices, one or more offices in Northern Kentucky. In fact, we just received this flyer from one of the Cincinnati-based hospitals, you might recommend it or recognize it, but the whole tagline at the very top says, "You have choices for OB/GYN care in Northern Kentucky." So this is one of our competitors, so, you know, they are thinking that they're competing here in Northern Kentucky, and that there is a competitive environment in Northern Kentucky. At the time of the merger, which Dr. Merly mentioned, there was consideration for should St. Luke and St. Elizabeth, should they be allowed to combine? And the fact of the matter is, many of you probably experienced this yourselves, that you go to Cincinnati for many services. You may go for entertainment, you may go for sports games, you may go for restaurants. People from Cincinnati come to Northern Kentucky, thank goodness, they want our bourbon bars, they want our fun environments down here. We are a Greater Cincinnati community. And when you look at the Greater Cincinnati community, that's what the Federal Trade Commission did when they looked at choices for health care, when they looked at the St. Luke and St. Elizabeth merger. As Dr. Merly mentioned, there was really a severe risk of health care being diminished in Northern Kentucky without St. Elizabeth stepping in and partnering with St. Luke in the way that we did. And when you look at quality scores from 14 years, 12 years ago, I guess it was now, since the merger, those just abject quality scores, when you look at those, they are higher than they were that long ago. higher than they were that long ago. And so I would just position that, you know, choice matters. Overbuilding also seems like it's no harm, no foul. We can have more facilities is better. But what happens is when you have those facilities, you have to find a way to pay for those facilities. One of the Ohio-based systems was just in a publicized negotiation with Anthem, the insurance company, where they were asking for a 13% increase in their costs, in their, where they get paid, their prices. So that's how it eventually trickles down the consumers. They eventually try to pass off those expensive facilities that they're building and overbuilding. And eventually those are going to hit our employers in Northern Kentucky and eventually hit our consumers. So please consider not passing this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is G.T. Shatara. Shatara, S-H-A-T-A-R-A. Okay, 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 okay. Next is Virdel Patel. I might have incorrectly said.
It's all that said.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Next is Jan Skovdahl.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. The fuss about certificate of need, I've listened to a lot, I don't want to repeat what y'all have said, but certificate of need did come from the federal government in 1974, just for those of you who don't have a strong background in it. And then the federal government did away with it because of the poor outcome. And that was done away with in 1986. I don't like speaking in front of people, I'm sorry. We've had CON for 50 years and it's not working. It drives up the price. The information that I have is that SANEE has a 98% market share in Northern Kentucky. No other hospital in Kentucky has more than a 48% share. So when they say that they have a greater share of Medicare and Medicaid patients and indigent patients, part of that is because they have the 98% share. Also, that shows a lack of choice that we have. How about profit margins? SANEE's net profit margin is 2% to 3% higher than the national average. SANEE also has $750 million in publicly traded securities, which is very rare for any hospital in the industry today. We pay more for health care in Northern Kentucky. Why is this important now? It's important now because demand for health care is increasing. The NKAPD predicts that Northern Kentucky's population by 2030 is going to grow by 15%. And the number of adults 65 and over is going to grow by 63%. We need choice. Let the free market system determine your health care choice. And I would just like to close with this thought. Competition breeds excellence and you deserve the best. Thank you.
All right. John Mueller.
What was her address?
Oh, Covington, Kentucky. John Mueller, and then next will be Greg Proctor.
Is that high enough? Got an extender? No. Hi there, I'm John Mueller. I live in Fort Thomas, you know, but I am here for Villa Spring of Erlanger at 4220 Houston Road. And I really can't believe I'm here. 25 years ago, we were welcomed to bring services here for a nursing home, as was Baptist Life. So our nursing home beds came from the old St. John's and my boss and founder, Baptist Life and another provider, bought those bed licenses. Weren't given them, weren't anything. We made an investment, we bought those bed licenses, brought them to Erlanger, built a $7.8 million facility at the time in 1998. And they provided care and services. So Erlanger's blessed by CON in that particular regard. What a great place to live that your aging parents can be right next to you. So that being said, CON is for nursing homes, there's a lot of talk about the acute care world. We're one of the programs. CON is fiscal responsibility. It surprises me that we would be against fiscal responsibility. 75 to 80% of our patients are Medicaid. So when you hear 20%, and that makes times tough, which it does, 80%, not only are our patients fragile, our business of care is fragile. So we need the predictability of what CON provides. And we're happy to talk about that further. So it's also access, the state health plan. Every county in Kentucky has a nursing home, thank God. So that every person in that county can stay close to where they're from. That is CON. You do away with CON, why would you stay rural? Also, maybe why would you stay in Erlanger? Wouldn't you go to Hebron or Burlington or Union? So you got to consider, it's more than acute care, is what we're asking. And so that's why I asked you to vote no on a resolution. Let's talk further about it. We're happy to come talk with you. I suspect Baptist Life will be up at some point here. But CON for our world is access, access, it's quality. You have to go through a very robust program, process to get it, the five components of a hearing. And I think that's really what I have to say. So I see the chiefs over here, we often get to interact with them and we appreciate their support at our facility. So please table it, vote no. Let's talk about it. Question?
You have a question?
I just have a quick question. How many beds do you have open right now at your facility? Like if my mother needs a bed right now? Do you have any openings right now?
Do you have a referral?
No, I'm just asking.
We're licensed, we bought 140.
I'm not asking how many you're licensed for. I'm asking right, right now.
May I answer your question?
How many, how many beds do you have open?
We're licensed for 140 beds currently, due to staffing. We have 120 of those beds open. It's our choice not to hire agency staff. So we'd rather shutter some beds than bring in staff that we have no accountability over, other than, we don't, we choose not to hire agency staff so we can know our staff. But similar to SUN, we need some, we'd be happy to have some staff. But 120 beds are open.
No, that's not what I'm asking. If, if a patient needs a bed right now.
119?
How, how, I just don't think you're understanding my question. I understand that you have 120 beds. Are any of those empty and available for a patient right now?
Today, because of staffing, two.
Okay.
But that changes, as you know, that changes on, the nature of the care we provide, that changes on a daily basis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, Greg Proctor is next. Dennis, Dennis Kelly will be after him.
Well, good evening, members of the Erlanger City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on the position of certificate of need. My name is Greg Proctor and I'm here on behalf of the Americans for Prosperity Kentucky, who could not be here due to an illness. They work to provide Kentucky with policy solutions based on proven principles of freedom and opportunity. I commend this council for working to make Erlanger and Kentucky a better place for its citizens. One such way you are doing this is by examining the barriers to accessible and affordable health care and the negative effect certificate of need has on health care in this state. As it stands today, the state CON program ranks as one of the most restrictive programs in the country with 23 regulated health care services. In my testimony today, I outlined two areas that are key to understanding certificates of need in Kentucky. Number one, the history of CON. Some has been mentioned so far here today. But CON is like having permission slips from a government board that hometown health care providers must receive if they wish to open new health care services or expand an existing service. In 74, 1974, Congress decided that every state should, ought to enact centrally planned health care market. So they mandated it, the federal government. If states wished to continue receiving certain federal funds, they were required to create a certificate of need program. Policymakers hope these programs would retain or restrain health care costs, increase quality and improve access. In 1986, as you would expect, the government repealed CON. However, Kentucky has maintained the CON restrictions. Since 72, Kentucky has restricted the supply of health care with CON programs. These programs prohibit health care providers from entering new markets or making changes to their existing capacity without first gaining the approval of state regulators. Research shows that reforming or repealing these laws would improve both the quality and accessibility of health care for Kentuckians while lowering its cost. While Kentucky has held on to its CON program, neighboring states like Indiana and Ohio have repealed dramatically or scaled back their programs. We don't want our health care dollars going across the river. Number two, the failure of CON. CON programs explicitly limit establishment and expansion of health care facilities. CON programs are associated with fewer rural hospitals. Deaths from treatable complications following surgery, as well as mortality rates from heart failure, et cetera, cause restrictions. I would ask, as representing this group, that we vote in favor of repealing CON. Thank you.
Dennis Kelly is next. After Dennis will be Tammy Nolan.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I say this almost in embarrassment. I was in the pharmaceutical industry for 35 years. And so I've been inside all the hospitals in the three states here. I'm going to have a little audience participation here. How many in the room have taken a course in economics? Raise your hand. Okay. What's one of the first things you learned in economics? Monopolies are bad. And that's what we have here, is a monopoly. There should be, competition is always good for everyone and monopolies only benefit those who hold it. And, you know, there's a aspect of, you have better jobs because you bring in more professionals. The salaries go up. And right now, it's a matter of, in Northern Kentucky, take it or leave it. And regretfully, you know, there were a lot of nurses that were fired from St. Elizabeth, which I thought was just an absolute abomination, but we'll just leave that alone. And we just need to eliminate this CON. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Tammy Nolan, and then, sorry. I'm sorry.
Address. What's your address, sir?
Actually, it doesn't say.
What's your address?
Mr. Nolan, or Mr. Kelly?
I'm sorry.
Your address, your city and state, or city.
City and state, I'm sorry. I live in Richwood in Kentucky.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just remember to say your city, okay? After Tammy will be Jerry Gerding.
Hi, my name is Tammy Nolan and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am here today because back in July, I became a patient of St. Elizabeth Hospital. I found, they found that I had a slow bleed and today I still have that slow bleed. I was just in the hospital this month. Due to now, they have found that I have a 45% blockage in my heart. My blood pressure is so high that they've been trying to deal with for the past couple of months, they can't figure it out. To this day, I'm still not healthy. I am asking you to reform, to repeal certificate of need for me, because I need health care options. Trying to go across the river to, with my insurance, they told me it would be out of pocket. I can't afford out of pocket. I can't afford high cost going and not using my insurance. So I'm asking you to please, for the safety of me and for my life, to please, you know, get, do away with certificate of need. I need options for my health. I've been dealing with this since July of last year and I'm still dealing with it. Thank you.
Your city?
I just want to, I want to do a little bit of clarification. So this governing body does not have the ability to repeal certificate of need. Okay, this is purely a resolution that's on in support of removing certificate of need. That is it. It does not get rid of certificate of need. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear of what this governing body has the ability to do and not do. All right. Jerry Gerding, and then Chet Hand will be next.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Gerding. I am a resident of Wilder, Kentucky, in Campbell County. I am here to ask you to please support this resolution against certificate of need, because I do believe we have an issue here in Northern Kentucky where people aren't given a choice for a lot of these services. You know, I think we heard Mr. Colvin read out 20-something services that the government picks the winners and losers in, where people here have to go to a board in Frankfurt, to the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. And I'll keep my comments to myself on what I think about them and how they operate, like a lot of the other agencies in Frankfurt. This is about giving people a choice. I'm a single father of a 14-year-old son. I've taken my son to Children's. I've taken my son to SANEE's. I've gone to Christ. You know, it's about giving people a choice. What makes it that we need to have 20-something services here in Northern Kentucky that need to be regulated by the government, which is never a good idea, when they have three in Ohio? Does the river make that big of a difference? We have 20% of Northern Kentuckians going to Ohio for their health care, when we could in turn have them building those facilities here, especially the inpatient ones where there is no competition, and having us keep that money here in Northern Kentucky? You know, I hear this from the chamber all the time about gambling and how we are letting all these people go across the river for gambling. What's the difference? So I ask you again to please give Northern Kentucky families a choice and help support this resolution so Representative Proctor can get this passed next session. Thank you.
Chet Hand, and then next is Tom Pitts.
Thank you. My name is Chet Hand and I am a commissioner on the Boone County Fiscal Court. I'm also a full-time director of corporate risk management for a multinational company and my background includes 10 years as a fire officer and a medic. I represent all of Boone County, which a portion of Erlanger falls in. Coincidentally, I was informed by a constituent here tonight who works for SANEE's that they were told to be here. But since they actually support the CON repeal, they did not show up. I urge you to support the resolution, putting the weight of your representation of your citizens behind this much-needed effort in our state and our local community. There is a rapidly growing wave around the state calling for the repeal of certificate of need, but especially here in Northern Kentucky. Caveat all of my comments, this isn't about, or this isn't to state or imply any deficiency in the Northern Kentucky health care worker or hospital in our area. This is about medical choice, healthy competition and government's role in health care. CON puts the decision on health care in the hands of government officials, and I'm sure the vast majority of citizens in our cities and our Commonwealth would agree that the government should stay out of medical care as much as possible. On a personal note during COVID, a SANEE's health care provider in the same conversation with me said a specific care was critical for my health and then denied me that treatment because I wasn't able to wear a mask. Despite my entreaties, this effectively forced me to go across the river or permanently harm my health. And the ripple effect on my family, wife and six children would have been significant. And the ripple effect on my family, wife and six children would have been significant. This is what monopolies are able to do. Forced behavior because there's no competition. Many people love St. Ease, and they should. For those that prefer another option, we as elected officials should support efforts to allow that. If the government has so much influence on cost of healthcare, 70% or so was mentioned earlier, that same influence would apply to the competition as well. Some argue this isn't a government issue. Because we express support for other industries and businesses to come into our community, why would we not do it for the healthcare industry as well? What about high-paying jobs that they bring? Healthcare has been intertwined with government for decades. It is a major concern of most of our constituents. And for local government to support competition in that space is intrinsically beneficial to our constituents. We want to provide opportunity and choice to all of our citizens. And we should, why would we discriminate in healthcare space? CON is a state-sponsored monopolistic industry behavior. This is not anti-St. Ease, but the fact that they see it this way makes it clear that they know they have a monopoly on services in Northern Kentucky. It amazes me that many St. Ease employees feel that they're going to lose their jobs or that this will somehow impact them negatively. Why do they feel that way? If there is a market need for this many medical employees in the area, then they will either stay working at St. Ease or they will have new opportunities for growth at a competitive hospital. Many of the concerns with eliminating CON are reasonable concerns, such as taking Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera, or cherry-picking services. But I urge you to take the side of repealing CON.
Tom Pitts, and then after is Bill Woodside.
Tom Pitts, I live in Erlanger. I apologized my outburst before, but I don't think he understood your question properly. Tom Pitts, I have worked at St. Ease for 38 years, 36 of them in surgery. The certificate of need that has been applied for is for outpatient surgery center, not a hospital. Outpatient surgery centers are built for one thing and one thing only, to turn a profit. It, yeah, I, the, um, do you know what the current trend in reimbursements are? What the cost of medical equipment is? The, these are all things that are affected by taking profits away from a hospital. The argument is about choice in healthcare. It already exists. You can walk into any hospital you want. The river is not that wide. Alls you got to do is figure out who's going to pay for it once you get there. The hospital spent a fortune on advertising. I have coworkers who have gone to Christ, some of you have gone to Christ because your insurance allows it. Insurance is more restrictive to your choice of hospitals than any CON. Surgery centers are for healthy ASA 1 and 2 patients with few comorbidities, which if you don't understand that, basically, if you're not healthy, you don't get the choice to go to surgery center. If an emergency arises while you were in a surgery center, they have to transfer you to an inpatient center. Ambulances are obligated to take you to the nearest inpatient center. Again, not your choice. If Christ was applying for an hospital, maybe, or any other hos, nobody wants to build hospitals because they're not as profitable as surgery centers. St. Ease has been serving the Northern Kentucky community since the Civil War. As somebody mentioned before, Spears, Booth and St. Luke's are all gone because they were unable to financially survive. If you want to go to Christ or their outpatient surgery center, by all means, go. We, it's, I will drive two hours each way to find someplace I like to go hiking or to go kayaking. If you want to go to another hospital, go right ahead. Nobody is stopping you. The choice is just convenience. It's not about choice.
Bill Woodside is next. After that is Corrine Pitts.
My name is Bill Woodside. I'm a proud resident of Erlanger, Kentucky. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this time. I would like to see this resolution to do away with certificate of need to be adopted. I have to confess that the only research that I've done on certificate of need has been my last several trips to the emergency room at St. Elizabeth, most recently, two weeks ago tomorrow. And it wasn't pretty. And it's not the first time that that's happened. I heard the number, only 6% of the people need healthcare. I don't know if that's true or not. But looking around in the emergency room at the people that were there with me, we were numerous. And we sat there for hours and hours and hours and hours. Two weeks ago, I was in the waiting room at the emergency room for five and a half hours. And everybody that was in the emergency room was sitting there for multiple hours. And once I got admitted to the emergency area, they wheeled me back. And there are people on gurneys in the hallways. Now, I know St. Ease just spent billions of dollars building a new heart center. Maybe they ought to expand the ER. Because the, and I have nothing but good things to say about the staff. The staff has been terrific. And the quality of care has been good. But the service, I heard a term, highest-quality healthcare a little while ago. I don't know that I can agree with that. I didn't receive the highest-quality healthcare sitting in the emergency room for five and a half hours. Obviously, we need competition. Competition is good. I've been in sales my entire life. I've been competing my entire life. Competition makes you sharp. So I'll wrap up my comments with a statement about Councilman Cahill. Tom, I know you, I like you, I respect you. But as an employee of St. Elizabeth, I think maybe you should recruise yourself from the voting. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Corrine is next. And, let's see here, Roseanne Nields will be after her.
Hi, Mayor, Council. I'm Corrine Pitts, as many of you know. I'm a longtime Erlanger resident. I served on this very council for 14 years until I retired two years ago. I'm also married to Tom, the St. Elizabeth nurse, for 39 years. St. Elizabeth has been good to our family. They've had compassion also, as my family have been patients there. Anywhere from surgeries to my miscarriage to, my husband had septic blood infection and anaphylactic reaction to a lost sting. We also know how, we've heard how involved St. Ease is with the community. They, with many benefits and volunteer hours to many nonprofit organizations. I won't go into that because we all know how involved they are. Mayor and council's responsibilities are short-term and long-term, planning of budget and maintaining staff, public works, first responders to keep our city a pleasant, safe place to live where people want to stay. Mayor and council are supposed to be nonpartisan. I know outside of council, many of you are not, and that's fine. But I urge you to not blur those lines as representatives of a very diverse city. We all know this is a big push by a Boone County political party. And many people that signed up today to get rid of the CON are not even from our city. I heard many good reasons why the certificate of need is needed. I think it should stay. Another example is, it's kind of like a way of preventing empty office space because too much of the same thing. St. Ease does not hold a monopoly. You can go where you want to go unless your insurance doesn't pay for it. It's not based on geography. In closing, I urge this legislative body not to drag our city into a state political battle on a resolution that would negatively impact a wonderful business in our very own community, our Erlanger community. Thank you very much.
Roseanne, and then Steve Doan will be after them.
Hi, I'm Roseanne Nields from St. Elizabeth Healthcare. And I've been an employee for 35 years. And I work at Dolwick and pay taxes to the city of Erlanger. I have been there for 35 years and have seen the commitment to our community that we've had throughout the history of St. Elizabeth. And that's what's going to be impacted here if CON goes away. We partner with people to address difficult issues like addiction and substance use. We work with our universities and our high schools to create opportunities for students to learn and to become contributing citizens in the healthcare workforce. We sponsor over 350 organizations, not-for-profit organizations, to help address social determinants of health. Is there any other hospital or any national company that's going to come into this community to do the same? They're not. They just aren't. We have been committed to this community and we're just going to stay committed to this community. And there's been a lot of misinformation said today that we would take issue with. Every single hospital required, were required patients and staff to wear masks or our Medicaid and Medicare reimbursement would be impacted. And you heard that was 70% of our business. Prices are fixed. We did not tell anyone to come here tonight. Every single person that came here came on their own voluntary opportunity. So another misnomer. But really focusing on the positive. We want to commit to this community. We will be impacted by the elimination of CON. Only, they will only come in and do profitable services, like Mr. Colvin said. They will take that money back to Cincinnati or back to stockholders. Because there are for-profit national companies that want to do ASCs in this community. And those will do nothing for the community. So I just urge you to oppose this resolution. Thank you.
Representative Doan.
Hi, thank you. Steve Doan, resident of Erlanger. Formerly said on this body, I want to thank this body for addressing this issue and for leading the way in Northern Kentucky for discussing certificate of need, one of the critical issues that's facing our state. You're right, Corrine, this is a statewide issue. But unless people at the local level get involved and get engaged, it's hard for members around Northern Kentucky, as well as the state, to understand this issue. I also want to thank St. Elizabeth for what you guys do in this community and your commitment to Erlanger and Northern Kentucky as a whole. Garen, particularly, particularly you. One of the things that Garen mentioned, which is a big win for anybody that wants to see a repeal or certificate of need move forward, is that he's agreed with House and Senate leadership to look at modernizing certificate of need, which for me, a guy like me, I like to take an incremental step if we can. So that's already a big win, and I appreciate you for doing that for us. One of the things that's been discussed is certificate of need came about from federal legislation in 1974. That legislation was later repealed in the 1980s as a result of healthcare, healthcare costs rising throughout the nation. And many states have repealed that. One of the areas that they looked at was rural hospitals. And so while that's not an issue that impacts Northern Kentucky, it is an issue that around our state is extremely important. And so if we in Northern Kentucky can move towards repealing CON, which is the legislation that Representative Proctor sponsored and I co-sponsored in the last legislative session, if we can look at that and show that it works in Northern Kentucky, maybe we could replicate that model around the state and help to impact people in a positive way. So I thank this body for considering this resolution and for sending a message to all of us down in Frankfurt. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you all for your participation and your involvement. I think we've had some really good perspectives. I think we all learned a lot. So I appreciate it. All right, I'm going to give back my mayor's report time. City Administrator, Mr. Glenn.
Here we go. All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a couple of things. This upcoming May, we're going to have a spring cleanup thanks to the efforts of Sherri and Kevin Quinn. So recognizing the situation and Kevin dedicating staff to, staff the spring cleanup. And we're going to have it on May 10th through the 13th. The hours will be Wednesday, Thursday and Friday from noon to 7:00 PM. And on Saturday from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And more details will be on our website as far as materials that will be accepted and not accepted. It is MARF hearing time, which is Municipal Aid Road Fund. So this year will be a little bit different. In years past, we are required to have a public hearing, which is no longer the case. But what we are required is to have a discussionary item on the agenda, which we'll do in May. And we'll have the, all the roads associated with the MARF fund listed and discussed at that time. The next thing is codes discussions. I'd like to put on the caucus agenda here in April, an opportunity for Public Works, myself and PDS to discuss upcoming codes needs and Public Works and staff's recommendations on how we can move forward, if that so suits council. And the last thing I have is groundbreaking. So everybody has a little flyer. So we have a groundbreaking here in a couple of days on Friday at 2:00 over on our Montgomery property. And we invite all council to show up for a groundbreaking ceremony. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gatlin.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, we have a report on capital projects. Mr. Quinn.
I've got a couple of street projects that are going on. Of course, Eaton Asphalt is currently construction with Jaclyn Drive, Kimberly, Debbie and Mitten. Right now, they're replacing sidewalks and aprons on Jaclyn. Kimberly Drive, I know is probably an issue with the school. We're planning on doing that when school is out. So you can expect that to be happening after that. Jefferson Construction is going to be starting in May to finish up the Sigma Kappa Theta project. They just have Theta to do, to complete. So they're going to start around May 1st. And then we have Crescent Avenue. TMS Construction is looking to start about the third or fourth week of April with that project. And that goes from Kentland's Drive to Coordinator, all concrete replacement on that project. Hillcrest was actually completed today with the asphalt. That's a stormwater project. Was just completed today with the new asphalt, storm drain. And they just have a little bit of ground restoration to do with that project. And then last, of course, everybody probably sees Cahill Common being constructed in Phase 1, moving some dirt and doing some stormwater piping currently and some sidewalks. So that's a great project that has finally come along. So and then, of course, Phase 2 will be bid sometime, probably in July. That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads that would like to give a report? Ms. Kramer?
Don't forget Budget Boot Camp, April 15th, Saturday at 9:00 AM. Thanks. Saturday, April 15th.
All right. Any other department heads? Okay. All right. Reports from task forces. Ms. Nicely?
I will make it short and sweet. I hope everybody's noticed the wonderful signs Public Works has out regarding Arbor Day, which is April 29th, 10 to 1 at Flagship Park. There'll be planting demo, there'll be lunch, and a planning activity, raffles, giveaways, and free tree saplings for the first 200 volunteers. Hope everybody can mark it on their calendar. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hermes?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a task force meeting for parks this afternoon, and I think we had a record turnout. It was about 20 people who were there for it, and we are currently working on revising the ordinance, Chapter 96 of our ordinance, which addresses parks. And we had a lot of fruitful conversation regarding that, and our next meeting will be May 2nd, in, probably in this room, at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Any other task forces? Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, I have my normal Kenton County Alliance report. It's very short. Attendance was probably about 20-plus people. The Kenton County Alliance meeting started at 11:30 and lasted until 1:00. Diane O'Toole opened the meeting. Our speaker was Scott Hardcorn. The phone number for the drug strike force is 859-525-6272, or the Erlanger Police Department. We discussed the impact of fentanyl. The packaging for the drugs is similar to the packaging of candy that is not a drug. The packaging cannot be stopped or controlled, but the improper use can be controlled. There have been numerous seizures of drugs. This includes January 1st, 2023, through March 31st. Fentanyl, the amount seized was 1,670 grams for a street value of $140,280. Cocaine, 1,236.2 grams for a street value of $112,494.20. Methamphetamine, 714 grams for a street value of $41,412. Heroin, 54.4 grams for a street value of $4,950. And marijuana, 43,011.4 grams for a street value of $285,000. A medicinal marijuana bill passed. The total usage for drugs in 2022 has been surpassed already in 2023. This meeting was very informative and kind of scary. We're gearing up for our sticker shock event to be done ahead of prom time. That's where we go door-to-door to some of the businesses and ask them to put signs, stickers on their liquor, it's called stickers of liquor, for lack of a better word, but to put the stickers on the liquor, and it's like a red flag when somebody picks up that box of alcohol or the cans or whatever, they see the sticker that says, "Say no to alcohol." End of report.
Thank you. Any other task forces? Okay. All right, Ms. Hoffman, are there any bids tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, does anybody have any unfinished business? Any new business? All right. Legislation?
All right, this is a resolution opposing certificate of need legislation. This resolution specifically states that the city of Erlanger City Council supports and urges our state legislators to file support and discuss legislation during that coming session, which would reform the requirements of certificates of need. Just to kind of underscore what the mayor said, this is a resolution which, again, is just supporting and urging the state legislature to further look into this issue, to file support and discuss legislation which would reform the requirements of certificate of need.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Mr. Hermes, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? Okay. Ms. Jasper Lucas, I saw your hand go first.
I just have a couple of, well, a request, and then I have something I want to say. Can, before we vote, can, Jack, can you clarify what a yes vote means and a no vote means? I just want to make sure everybody understands. Do you want me to go ahead and make my comments to you now, or do you want to?
Yeah, and frankly, the title of this resolution is a little confusing. So really what it is, is it's a resolution supporting reform of certificate of need legislation, and the body of the paragraph is really what the yes vote is. The yes vote is, is that the city of Erlanger City Council supports and urges our state legislators to file support and discuss legislation during that coming session, which would reform the requirements of certificate of need.
Thank you.
And I would ask to change the heading to a resolution supporting reform of certificate of need legislation. I think that would clarify that.
I agree, because when you said it earlier, I was like, I was even confused.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay, and then I did have something else I wanted to say. So I think I can speak for the rest of council, and we can say that we've gotten hundreds, maybe thousands, of emails over the past few weeks. And I'm just going to speak for myself, obviously. Most of the emails from those asking me to vote no made no mention of the impact that this has on outcomes, and weren't from actual healthcare providers. I made tick marks tonight on the yeses and the nos, and then I also did it on provide, I noted who was a provider that was here, a healthcare provider, and I consider that a doctor, a nurse practitioner, or a PA, because that's who I am going to get my direction from for my own healthcare. There was only one, so I just want to make sure that's pointed out. And I don't think I got any emails, except one, from a healthcare provider. Most of the emails that I got urging me to vote no focused on money and control, and not quality, not outcomes, not improving the health of our residents. I also just want to point out, no one's disputing the impact that St. East has on our community. I'm not disputing that, and I heard a lot about that tonight, and I appreciate that, but I don't think that's really what this is about. The one healthcare provider who did reach out to me urged me to vote yes, and talked about how eliminating CON would improve access quality and help improve outcomes, and I agree with that. I think competition in healthcare is positive, and eliminating CON will greatly improve access and quality, and I'm voting yes, because I believe that's what's best for our residents, and I believe that's what they want. I love my St. East primary care doctor, Dr. Stacy Bishop. I love my endocrinologist, Dr. Iderman. I trust him completely. I just saw him last week. I think they're great. I have no problem with them. But I think they need to be in charge of my healthcare, and not the government, and not a lawyer in Frankfurt who probably didn't go to medical school or has a medical background. So I just, I just think that providers and consumers are who needs to be making these choices, and that's why I'll be voting yes.
Mr. Cahill, I saw your hand next.
Yes, so just to be clear, I will be voting tonight on this resolution. I am a St. East employee, but I'm not an owner. Today, I represent the taxpayers and the citizens, which include Sun Medical Care Springs, Baptist, St. East, and also the other homeowners in northern Kentucky that need quality healthcare. Since 1861, St. Elizabeth Healthcare has been a partner with the community that it serves. Its mission values and values all reflect this. Kentucky Hospital Association and Kentucky League of Cities opposes this elimination. We've been debating choice and quality. If you have private insurance, you've always had a choice of where you would like to go, whom you would like to provide that service for you or your family. St. Elizabeth Healthcare, as the hospital in here, has been honoring their commitment for over 160 years to everyone that needs healthcare, no matter what their ability is to pay. It's a generous partner with the community with millions and benefits distributed every year. In regards to quality, they are number one in Kentucky, U.S. News World Report. According to Rand, they hold distinction of number one in Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana. My concern is, why are we hearing from individuals that do not pay taxes, nor vote in our elections, or contribute to the betterment of this city? That's what I've heard tonight. St. Elizabeth has 894 Erlanger-based employees that contributed over $600,000 in payroll taxes. They employ over 300 residents in our community, and there are many retirees from the St. Elizabeth Medical Center in this community also. The hospital has partnership with us and many cities in northern Kentucky. For Erlanger itself, they've saved us and our employees over $240,000 in healthcare top cost. They have sponsored our events, worked with us on preventative care, especially with the opioid crisis, and they have a proven track record of being here for Erlanger and northern Kentucky. Thank you.
Ms. Kyle?
I want to thank St. Elizabeth for being here tonight. I, it was really an eye-opener for me, and also want to thank you, because I would not be here tonight if it were not for St. Elizabeth. I'm one of their success stories. I'm a heart valve replacement patient, and so I'm very impressed with St. East. However, I think Mr. Colvin has the right idea that he and whoever decides to be with him, they need to be the ones that go down to Frankfurt and work with the representatives. We're only urging that there be reform, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Gatlin, because I was a little bit hesitant there for a while, because I think that's what we need. It sounds like CON needs to be modernized and updated by new regulations, which will improve healthcare, which will give our constituents a choice, and also, while they're doing that, hopefully, this will help promote helping the Medicaid and the Medicare patients. So I think that's the key. Sounds like we need a little tweaking to be done there, so I will be voting yes, not to be pointing any fingers at anybody, but, because I think there needs to be some reform. And I appreciate you saying that you're willing to work with them, because I think that's, that really is what I think needs to happen. Thank you.
Ms. Nicely?
I wanted to piggyback off of what Ms. Kyle said also. Thank you for all the representative from St. East that came and spoke with us, and also the other residents and officials that have talked on the other side. I will be voting yes. I think everybody deserves choices. We have choices in life, whether we go to a restaurant, what we do for fun, where we live. Why wouldn't we have choices in how we get medical treatment and choices on that aspect? I will be voting yes, and I think we are here on the bench representing the cities of Erlanger that elected us in our positions, and everyone should have fair in choices and not be denied any healthcare.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hermes?
I think mine's more of a question procedurally. We made a motion, and then we talked about changing the title.
I think procedure, there was a motion and a second, and then there was discussion.
In the course of that discussion, you said that
Yeah, so do you want to
It should be a resolution supporting the reform of the certificate of need requirements. Do we need to change that?
If you want to withdraw your motion, then you could remake the motion with that title change.
I think that would be the proper thing to do then, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to request to, what did you say, remove the motion?
Withdraw your motion.
Withdraw the motion, just that quick. Withdraw the motion.
So I have a motion to withdraw. Ms. Kyle will second the motion.
I don't think you need to vote on a motion to withdraw. I think the first and second would just need to agree to withdraw, but I'm not necessarily, this might be on page 623 of Robert Surrival's order, but I think that would do what we need to do, is just withdraw the first and second, and then redo the motion with the title change.
And who was the second? It was Mr. Hermes and Ms. Nicely?
The original.
The original?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Do you withdraw, Ms. Nicely? Okay. All right.
All right, so then I would like to propose a new motion with the similar ordinance and the change in the title reflecting that this is a resolution supporting the reform of a certificate of need, of the certificate of need requirements.
And everything else in the resolution remains the same with that motion, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Ms. Kyle, you second? Any other discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, that was the only piece of legislation on tonight's agenda. Are there any announcements this evening? Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Reckers, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.